Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the June 23rd, 2021 Regular Board Member, Regular Board Meeting of the Warrensville High City School District. Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll? Dr. Rock?
Need you to call the roll. Call the roll. No, we need you to call the roll.
Can't hear. He cannot.
Oh, he's not. He's not in the meeting.
Oh, that is, oh, just, you know what, just bear with us for a little bit. We are having Wednesday night tech difficulties.
So, welcome.
Hello. So, let's start this all over again. Good evening, everyone. We now have all of our partners with us. Welcome to Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021, School Board Meeting of the Warrensville High City School District. Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Present. We are all here and accounted for. At this time, we are at Item 1.2, the Pledge of Allegiance, and Member Gator will recite the pledge on our behalf.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We are at Item 1.3. We need a motion on the floor to approve tonight's agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept Item 1.3, the approval of the agenda.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, ma'am. It has been moved and properly seconded. But before we go further, Dr. Rock, Mr. Jolly, are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
No additions or deletions, no.
Thank you. Board, none? Well, I'm hearing nothing. Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Mooman?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. We are now at Item 1.4, and we need a motion on the floor to approve the minutes that were listed. April 7th, special, I mean, sorry, work session. April 21st, a regular meeting. May 3rd, special meeting. May 5th, a work session meeting. May 12th, a special meeting. May 19th, a regular meeting. And May 26th, a special meeting, all in the year of 2021.
Madam Chair, I move Item 1.4, approval of minutes. Looking for the following approval of the minutes from April 7th, 2021, work session meeting. April 21st, 2021, regular meeting. May 3rd, 2021, special meeting. May 5th, 2021, work session meeting. May 12th, 2021, special meeting. May 19th, 2021, regular meeting. And May 26th, 2021, special meeting.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, ma'am. It's been moved and properly seconded. Board, are there any discussion on any of the attached meetings, meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none. Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mrs. Mooman?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Next on tonight's agenda is Item 1.5, Public Participation. Mr. Jolly, did we have anything coming to the email account before noon today?
No, ma'am. We did not receive any emails today or in the past month.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to put it out there to remind the community that if you do have any public participation that you would like to share with us, that you will submit an email to. And Mr. Jolly, if you can call off the address, the email. I apologize. I put you on the spot. It is on our district website, under Public Participation. And if you click the link, you are able to submit your comments. Because we do look forward to hearing from you. We do understand that we're virtual, but we are still working diligently to stay connected to each and every one of you. All right. Next on our agenda is Item 1.6. We have a presentation of the new K-8 science curriculum, and that will be delivered by Mrs. Ruth Ray.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
All right. With this, I'm going to share my screen. Can you see my screen? Is that when everybody able to see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, good evening, everyone. We've now come to the time of our science curriculum adoption. We have not had a new adoption for the past five years. I'm going to go over the process that is going through. It will be me tonight. Maybe a teacher will join since it's so late in the, I mean, since the summer has started. But maybe we may have a teacher join. But in the meantime, between time, I'm going to go through the agenda. We're going to talk, I mean, we're going to go over our adoption team, our timeline and procedures, the curriculum alignment, the curriculum, which is Inspire, and the Why Inspire. First, I'll start. We had a, the adoption is K through 8. We had the opportunity to have teachers in representation from each grade level, including our intervention specialist, as you stated here. All of these teachers were involved with the process from the beginning and until the, until we voted on a actual curriculum. The adoption process and timeline started in February of 2021. Conversation started as early as the school year began. But as we went through the hustle and bustle and, you know, getting everything done, we started to reach out to companies, ask them to bring, send us different resources. We developed a team. We identified it. We had our initial meeting. We discussed the exclusive criteria for the curriculum. The criteria we used was the Ohio Department of Education rubric for curriculum and alignment. February 1, 2021, materials and resources began to be delivered for the high school and for the middle school. And the team members participated in company presentations. One side note, I want to say that one, this adoption, the curriculum that is being adopted, we did have an opportunity to pilot it with 8th grade for the 2019-2020 school year. Beginning in March and April, the teams evaluated materials, resources in class. They discussed and completed the rubrics during planning and additional meetings, which took place after school. The team participated in the company's presentations. So, both company, I mean, was, we had two companies that actually got us materials, wherever to look at them. We engaged three, one company. It didn't come through as they, they come in a timely fashion, let me say that. But the team was able to have presentations. Once they evaluated the materials, they were able to ask these companies specific questions for additional resources if was needed. That's, and it was a virtual presentations, but it was a live virtual presentation. The team members, then, in June, the team made a decision to move forward with the adoption of a new curriculum, which is Inspire Science, sponsored by McGraw-Hill. And then, in this upcoming fall, it would be implemented once approved by the board in grades K through 8. I want to talk about the state standard curriculum rubric. This rubric allowed the teachers, it gave the teachers a guide. And if I can, I want to hit this, and I hope it takes me to it. There it is. So, the state, we're under, in each one of, on the state website, with the state standards, they have a curriculum rubric so that you can make sure that your curriculum is aligned to the different components of the state standards. So, you know, so, and this rubric runs from 1 to 3. Each one of the teachers and the teams had this rubric. They were able to review the material alongside this rubric right here. And if, if you may, and if you would like to look at it even more, I can put this in the chat that you can review it later. But I'm just going to, I just want you to quickly see that it was done with, you know, with this, this particular rubric provided by the state. As a matter of fact, I will put it in the chat for, so that you could be able to view it later. I'll make sure to get in the chat before it's over. And I'll share the presentation also. So, the one, the most important about this, this filter provides a good starting point in evaluation of resources and materials. And it gave everyone the same lens to look at, look at it. So, it was across the board. It didn't go from, wasn't subjective. It was very objective with, you know, this rubric. So, Why Inspire Science? The rubric was a 0 to 3. It was a 0 to 3 evaluation. These were the components of it. And when it came to Inspire Science, it hit all three across the grade levels. I would like to share that when we got to the part of deciding which way to go, we are in, in 1st grade, had some different needs. But when we were able to go back to the company, ask specific questions with the company, such as hands-on and such as more character presentations or representations in the different areas of science, they were able to provide that because they were thinking about the developmental component of K and 1. And it was exciting to see K and 1 very involved at this, you know, at this point. Because a lot of times, honestly, that science and social studies, when it comes to those early ages, it is not as present as our EOL and our math. And the one thing that Inspire Science inspired the K-1 with was with their direct alignment of our Wonders curriculum to this, our science curriculum. So, there were specific materials that were for reading, stories and everything aligned to science that was aligned to their reading materials. So, that really was a winning point for those grade levels. And as you can see here, like I said, all of these are the components from the rubrics, which, which received a 3. Will move to a 3 once the K and 1 team was able to have those questions answered. And here, I talked about a bridge between curriculums. The curriculums, the Wonders and Inspire Science, K-5, has a direct correlation. The, I don't want to hit it. But this document here is the scope and sequence and the plan and document that teachers will be able to use. And it actually shows the science in the social studies curriculum that's aligned and Wonders, that's aligned to the science. So, it's truly an integration of science in the most needed areas at those foundational grade levels. Another key component of what Inspire Science was the Level Readers. The Level Readers is a content, was connected level text with the reading abilities for approaching beyond in our second language learners. So, what it is, because there's an online component here and it's also a hands-on component, but you can introduce a subject area to your natural defenses. And it's at every reading level, every grade level. So, when you get to 1st grade, if you have a 1st grader who is delayed, you can give them, and it's done in a very discretion way. Everyone's book looked the same, well, the colors on the binds are different, but the scholars have the same pictures on the book. They have the same title on their book, and they're able to read along at their grade level and able to comprehend with this thing. So, the differentiation from K all the way through 8th grade was a really key component with this, which the other resource did not offer. And unfortunately, the other resource, not unfortunate, but that's the resource that we have been using for the past years. So, this was a key component to, to the, to the why. If you don't mind, I just want to take a few minutes to show this video because it talks about the purpose and the mission of Inspire, Inspires Science. Thank you. So, with McGraw, with McGraw-Hill, we actually have some other curriculum in our district also with the Wonders and also at the high school level. This is the science curriculum that the science teachers are using also. So, given our, given our younger grades, K through 8, this foundation in, you know, the curiosity, the investigation, and the innovation through this, it really strengthens our scholars' science skills. I want to talk about, one of our teachers was not able to, too able to make it this evening. But one of the things that at the middle school level, the curriculum, one thing about the curriculum, once you open up the book, it was really heavy on the prior knowledge, which is one of our key components in our mission statement of developing the critical, the critical thinking skills. So, with that, with those inquiry-based labs, with the rigor and assessments, which they was not getting from the other curriculum in the past. It was very low level. It was all recall. It was lower taxonomy. It was the lower part of the taxonomy. So, it was just a lot, it was a lot of recall. There was a lot of, you know, short, not short answer response, but fill in the blank. But this one right here has the scholars, they write before the lesson. They write in, during the lessons, and they write after the lessons. That was another key component. We do have another teacher online, and I'm going to stop there. And if she would like to add to this, and then I'll pick up. Ms. Dickerson is our 5th grade teacher at Warrensville Heights Elementary School.
Hi. I apologize because I am on my phone. Can everyone hear me and see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. So, my name is Tevel Dickerson. I am a 4th grade math and science teacher at Warrensville Heights Elementary School. I had a chance to review the science curriculum with my team. And just some of the feedback that we gave Mrs. Ray was we liked it because it was so interactive. One of the things that we do in our rooms, especially at the 4th and 5th grade level, is a lot of current events. And this text allows us to tie in any kind of science current events with the science curriculum. So, that was one of the takeaways that we had, that we really enjoy. One of the other 4th grade teachers mentions the Level Readers, as Mrs. Ray just spoke about, and how those would be very beneficial for our differentiation in our different groups. The other thing that we talked about is this curriculum talks about different STEM careers. And for our scholars, I think that's very important for them to see themselves in these different careers and how that relates to the science that they're doing currently and how they can connect it to their college. What classes should they take even in high school and middle school, onto college? And then, how can they, can they think about a career for themselves with that? So, it just encompasses so many different variables that we haven't had before. So, that's why we were excited about adopting this new curriculum.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. Another key component of this curriculum is that the online component was very user-friendly and very easy for their students to transition from the book to online. It mirrored it. So, if we ever have a pandemic or anything happen like this again, this curriculum will sustain the same type of expectation and rigor that the scholars need out of the, out of the science. And another thing I would like to share, I know I mentioned that the 8th grade was able to pilot for a year. We're a part of a science consortium, some of our science teachers with the inner ring. And this, and actually Inspire Science is used in the inner ring at a few of our schools, Maple Heights, Bedford. And it was one other school. So, we had an opportunity prior to, and at our middle school, so they had an opportunity to speak with teachers and begin to develop some scope and sequence that was, that was, that was aligned to one another. Because another part of that discussion was with our transitional population, a lot of times, we get at another school, and it's hard to, you know, we caught up. We don't know where you at. So, being a part of that consortium, giving a chance, so the transition happened, you know, having a curriculum that was solid enough and building an excellent source from that, that learning can still happen at a certain level. And you have a partner to go back and speak with to keep the students moving forward. Because as we know, you know, our science, our science course, as always, it can need some improvement and some help. And a lot of times, it's having the scholars at those same levels and then being able to come in and catch them up and get them where they're going is very key to the learning to continue to happen. And that would be the end of the presentation. If you have absolutely any questions, at this time, we were able to share materials with Ms. Mooman. We got her physical materials into, in her hand. And all of our other teachers were able to have physical and digital resources. And if you would like any resources, digital, we are more than happy to share. Are there any questions?
I do have a question, Madam Chair. Ms. Ray?
Yes.
The Wonders and the Inspire program, they're two different, separate programs, correct?
Yes, Wonders is our reading program for K-5. Inspire is the new, to be adopted program for science.
And Inspire is actually published by McGraw-Hill?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And my question was with both of them, and I know we're trying to inspire out for the first year, and it's good that the other school districts around this area are using them. But this is the most compatible program you found. And Ms. Dick, Ms. Dickerson? It was. She stated that, correct?
Yes, she did.
Okay. And this is our, I know we piloted it for the 8th graders, but this would be our first year, 2021-22, using it in the science part of our district.
Everyone, this will be the first year that everyone, K through 8, will have it. I did share earlier, high school currently use McGraw-Hill for our biology, social, I mean, our biology, physics, physical science, and environmental science.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Dickerson.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't really.
Mooman is on mute. Ms. Mooman, you're on.
I don't really have a comment. I just have, I mean, I don't have a question, but I do. I had an opportunity to review the books, and I was very impressed with it only because I thought that it really gave, was going to give our young people exposure and to make them think. And I love the idea, it's starting at kindergarten because it's going to, to me, science helps build self-esteem. And by having them participate with current events, I thought that was tremendous because a lot of time, our young people just don't have the opportunity to do that. And with this curriculum, I think it will challenge our young people that we will be up top in the field of science if we implement this particular program. So, I'm very pleased with it, Ms. Ray.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson.
Fantastic job.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. I do want to mention to the board also, with this curriculum, a lot of times, we adopt science curriculums. And then, they say, we have these kits. Got to get all of the kits. And Ms., I don't know, one of the things that the teachers are happy to see that the materials for this curriculum are consumables. $200 to $300, you can replenish them every year. We don't have a room of kids headed up to the ceiling that we can't use and everything, you know. So, when even the scholars go home, either consumables and the things that they're using to have these experiments, they can take them home, you know, and do them at home. And, you know, and just really give them opportunity to even explore even more. But that was another part of this, of this curriculum that was very user-friendly, and it was very, the teachers were very receptive to.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Ray, Mrs. Dickerson. It does sound like a great program. I think what comes across is the fact that we're able to align this program with our mission statement, ensuring that we're preparing our kids for the 21st century and beyond. And more importantly, it seems to have a very strong critical thinking component and line with the literacy and the writing. Just seems like it's going to be a very interactive and engaging program to put the kids through. So, thank you for bringing it to us.
Well, thank you, guys. Thank you for listening. I did set the, I put the rubric inside of the chat because that's going to be, I just take the time to look at that. It's just something key that the Ohio State Department of Education has developed to really help us evaluate the resources that's coming our way.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time, Board.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Jolly, at this point in time, if there's no other questions, Board, we'll hand the agenda back over to you as we go into the Superintendent Report, Item 1.7.
Yes, we'll start with Doug Myers. We'll give an update on the construction, the top, the bus agreement in the athletic complex. Doug?
This evening, we do have a request for you, and it is for the Moody-Nolan Osborn Agreement for the athletic complex and the bus facility. It is for, it was not included in the original agreement for the middle school and the high school. It is 100% LFI, and it is within our program budget that we have. But this request, actually, I also wanted to give an update as to where we are on the high school and the middle school. And of course, as we go forward, you know, any questions that you have, feel free to ask, so we can communicate those. There we go. So, the amendment, the agreement is for $337,570. And that is an agreement that'll be directly with the district. It's the same contract that we had for the middle school, high school, with kind of the joint with the OFCC agreement. The scope is for the design and for the GMP and Construction Administrative Services associated with the athletic complex and with the bus maintenance facility. And it also does include additional services. We had a rec center, mechanical, electrical, plumbing technology for Osborne that was not included in the original project that we needed to do as, as we designed the building. And the Phase 1 and Phase 2 surveys are associated with the existing bus garage, demolition for that. There are surveys that are required for that, for the underground tank removal. And then, finally, it includes reimbursement expenses for, for basically printing. And any of those costs that aren't spent will be returned back to the district. And any of those costs that aren't spent will be returned back to the district. And I think the next slide, I kind of have a more detailed breakdown of this. So these percentages are, are based on the, the same percentages that we have for the middle school, high school standard, uh, like six point six five percent for architectural fees. Um, with this agreement, we were able to bring Osborne on as more of a key role. Um, as we were designing the middle school and the high school, um, we, we also realized um, O-Sports is a branch of Osborne. They were already on the team, but they specialize in athletic design complexes. So with accelerating the, the stadium design, we wanted to kind of fortify our team a little bit and be able to um bring their expertise. So the agreement is still with Moody Nolan. They're still in lead of the project and, and they're still fully on the team. They'll be doing construction administration and everything. But we will be having Osborne as playing more of a key role in the design of it. And as I mentioned, this is um, this is not co-funded. This is fully LFI. So as far as the program update, we have started the design for this. Um, I had kind of have a sketch at the end of the, the presentation as we're developing this. Um, the program will include a football and a soccer stadium with an adling track and a press box and the throwing area. And we'll have a baseball field. And then we'll also have ad alternate that we hope to get in the project for um, for softball or practice fields, um, for a field house building, um, perhaps a parking lot, uh, perhaps a walkway. So we're kind of building it up with the climate right now with, with the current conditions of the bidding climate and everything else. We want to make sure that we bid this so that it's within our, our budget. But if we have better numbers, we want to be able to buy them through alternates. Um, we're going to complete the design this summer. We're working closely again with Infinity. Um, so we can go ahead and we're kind of working backwards from the completion of the fall of twenty-two so that we make sure that we get the design done and we actually in, uh, have a GMP request for you in the fall. And while we're doing this, we're actually looking at the existing site conditions that we have. As you know, that the site is all mobilized with mounding of, of soil that has been cleared away and with contractor access and with lay down materials and everything else. So part of going through this design is to be very diligent on not moving materials twice, putting it away. Um, we have to watch the stormwater retention, uh, prevention plan to make sure that we handle stormwater adequately. And so that is part of the design process that we have as we're going forward. So we actually have a contractor that Moody Nolan is very close to awarding to that um was involved with the, the GMP one. So they have all the quantities of materials and everything else. So we're, we're designing this with a little more um in- information that we would have if we weren't this deep into the project. Go to the next slide. So with the bus maintenance facility, um, we, we have put some gravel down to extend the existing parking lots to get the buses there. We've realized that we need um to handle the vehicles and the grounds vehicle parking area. Because right now with the bus maneuverability, it's just not quite big enough. So we are, we are developing that as a temporary location so we can vacate that and start the demolition of the existing bus garage here in the fall. So we are working on uh, uh, ordering the tanks and we're working on getting that site ready. Um, we have in the process, I believe, of moving our uh mechanical uh work, the, the maintenance work for the vehicles to this city service building. So we have that MOU clarified with them. And then as we go forward for the long-term plan, we're still working with the city to see what would it be involved for the districts to go there. But we're also looking at what would be involved for the districts to stay at a long-term at this uh Board of Education location. So both of those plans were, were, we're working with the district on to develop what the best options are and basically get us in place so that um we, we can continue to have service and maintenance of the vehicles and have a place for them, you know, both in the short term and the long term. So as a update to the high school and the middle school, today was milestone day. They actually did their first concrete pour, if anybody was able to swing by. So um, we're very excited about that. They, they have been awarding their contracts to their trade contractors. They've been bringing them on kind of strategically as they're needed. Um, they are going through scope reviews with all of them. Um, we are continuing to work with the design team and with Infinity Construction to identify cost reduction ideas so that we can try to get the ad alternates that we'd like to have within the project. So we've kind of given them a target and we're, um, I'm pretty optimistic that we're going to be able to get to that target. Um, we're working closely with the superintendents to, to be able to make sure that anything that we modify on the project is, is appropriate for the district. So it's a real work in progress that we have, but this project is underway. Um, they have made their awards for the steel contractors. Um, so the steel, you know, they do kind of have a, a delivery date of the steel and we're working with all of the trades to go ahead and get the construction underway. So this summer, you're actually going to see the underground work. We'll see the foundations. Um, and then closer at the end of the summer, we should, we're hoping to start seeing some of the superstructure going. So the next steps that we have is um to complete the design for the bus maintenance facility and the athletic complex. And um, when that is completed, um, I'm thinking in the fall, we'll have a GMP request for you. We do have the middle school, the bus garage and Eastwood Elementary. Uh, they had their walkthrough today with their contractors. And they um, they are going to have a GMP for us here in a week and a half or so. So we would like to have that request to you for those GMPs um at the July, excuse me, at the July board meeting so that we can then go ahead and get started. Um, and the plan is to be able to tear the middle school and the bus garage down so we can quite frankly make room for the construction of the athletic complex. And so we can shift our, um, once we tear that down, we, we can use our contractor parking. Um, this is a big project. We're going to have a lot of vehicles, a lot of workers that are going to need a place to park. So um, we want to clear them out of the way so that we can do the design and get the stadium. So all of that coordination is all taking place at the same time. But those are the next two big steps that we would have requests for the board of. And I, I think that that ends the slides. Oh, I might have a final slide on what the athletic complex. So this is a preliminary design that we're kind of getting the program down. Um, and this will shift and this, this will change a little bit, you know, because we're, we're managing within the budget we have. Uh, but you can kind of see, we're, we're kind of having the, the stadium next to the, the high school, middle school. And it creates a very nice outdoor plaza between the school. When we designed the high school, we designed it so that we could have um restrooms and concessions and security and lighting and an outdoor gathering space right between, you know, the stadium and the high school. So we can use those facilities and, and actually develop that whole kind of roadway between those facilities because it can be a really nice plaza area and a gathering space, you know, during the major events. And then you can see the baseball stadium would, would be to the west of that. And then as we're looking at now, where we have the softball fields, those might be um, practice fields. Um, and uh, we also tried to design a location for a storage facility for attic stock and for uh grounds vehicles and so on and so forth. Uh, if there's any questions, if, if there's anything I haven't covered, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, so Doug, I appreciate you going over this. We got a little disturbance outside the elementary school right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's why we're a little distracted. Um, give us a.
Sure.
Second.
Doug, we're sorry. It was a bit of an emergency over here. Just come over here.
I had no idea.
We had to call. All right.
I do have a question, Madam Chair. Doug, you ready to take some questions?
Yes.
Um, when we look at um, O-Sports and I know Osborne um is going to put together the design and everything for the athletic complex, are we looking at, and I know we had meets about it, the restroom facilities outside?
At this point, that would be an ad alternate. That would have been, that would be something that would go into field house slash storage room. So that would have um at um, some restrooms that would be kind of located right now that on, they'd be on the the southwest portion for basically for baseball fields, um, softball fields. Um, we don't know that we can afford that right now, but we're going to try to design that as an al- alternate. And we are going to have a, a location. So I'm working with Infinity so that in the future, if it ever happens, we can know exactly where we're going to, we're going to have the infrastructure in place to be able to tie into that so we don't make work, more work for us.
Hey Doug, quick question for you. Do we have a price on what it would cost to add restrooms?
They have put together a preliminary estimate, which far exceeded unfortunately what we have in the budget right now.
Okay, but, but, but we do have a ballpark.
We do have, we do have a ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
And I have asked, so that was prepared by um Moody Nolan and Osborne, and I've asked Infinity to look at it and it concurred that, that their numbers were um, were not completely out of bounds. So that's why these have quickly become some ad alternates for us. And that's why it's so important as, as we're doing cost reduction exercises, you know, the, the high school, we were able to keep it within our budget to keep going, but it was more expensive than what we had planned. And so now we're, we're looking at how can we manage that so that we can, you know, get more into the athletic complex? Or if, if costs continue to rise, we want to make sure we can keep the project going so that, so that we have, we have the ability to, you know, manage within the, the budget.
Yeah, so I did want to add, so we, you know, there's some very hard decisions due to this money. So we're doing everything that we can to ensure that we get all the things that we want in the project. So I do applaud Doug and the team because these are, these are painstaking meetings going through um everything. I'm trying to determine, you know, the offbeat with the prices be and then what we can add and what we can subtract. So preferably if everything continues, the economy continues to improve, um, that we will be able to um, have everything that we see inside, in this picture. We know we're going to have the stadium a hundred percent. The stadium will be there. We know the baseball field will be there. Um, we, you know, the softball fields, we have to, you know, th- those are alternates at this point, looking at those two. On that parking lot, that's off towards the center road, probably look to reduce that in some way or, but again, we have to, um. The, the, the mission is to make sure we keep our promises and keep them within budget. So that's what um the goal is. So the, the meetings continue and are continuous to ensure that uh we, we um come home with what we promised. I do, I will say that next week, we do have a meeting with the Cleveland Browns on on the first, I believe, and we're going to talk to them, just have some preliminary conversations with the Browns about um a field. Browns have a community program in which they donate football fields to local high schools. So they just did, they did all the Cleveland's fields. Um, they just did East Cleveland's field. So we're going to um attempt to conversate with them to see if, if there's any interest in supporting us with a, with our football field also. If that is the case, that will significantly help us in this project.
Thank you, Doug. Mr. Jolly, are there any other questions, Board, for Doug?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I have one and I got another. And a lot of things Doug went over, um. Uh, I, he went over a lot of what I was going to present, but I do want to extend the school year, just give a, a extended school year. Um, extended school year did start on the seventh of June and next Wednesday at thirty. Um, currently, we have fifty-six percent of our staff members that are supporting me extended school year. Fifty-two percent of the students who attend WE eight, the one's right elementary school attend. Thirty percent attend at the middle school and thirty-eight percent of the students who are enrolled attended the high school. Um, I think for a consensus, it is a outstanding program. It is running um effectively at all schools and especially our, our high schools doing some very creative things. The kids are en- en- engaging enrichment exercises, credit recovery, um, ninth grade orientation, all of the above are going on. It is um, I would love for any board member to get an opportunity to come visit before next Wednesday. Um, it's, it's going well. We'll have some data at the end of the summer to, to share. Um, also, I want to talk about next year's options for um for virtual learning. And we made some modifications to what our recommendation would be. To the, to the um new regulations, you know, the, the, the world has opened up pretty much, um, starting on June, on June second. Um, people are more active and engaged. There is no social distancing, really mandates anything. We've made some modifications to what we want to do next year um for the virtual academy. I'm going to share those with the board right now. So here we go. So we've always, we've always had a virtual academy in the district. So what we want to do is re- re- and revisit the virtual academy we have and which we do not use our live teachers, but we actually use the program that we've been using, which is Lincoln Learning and Ed- Ed Unity um through the Ohio Online Learning Program. And it's administered by E S C. So we've been working with that program since I've been here. So what we want to do, um, and our plan is to um open it up for students to um participate in the program. We will have an enrollment period from July first to July thirty-first. Um, we will have people apply and fill out applications for the program. Um, again, the special considerations is documented medical conditions, attendance rates and so forth. Our whole goal is to get everybody in school, but we want everybody to return to school. But we will have this online virtual option available for parents who believe that this is the best option for their students. It will be um through application process. Um, if kids are failing, having enrolled, um, haven't logged on the computer, um, may, haven't maintained attendance, we're going to require them to come in. Unless there is a medical condition, um, a parent medical dis- condition or a student medical condition. There's also going to be requirements where parents have to um attend meetings, they have to attend um orientation. They have to attend parent conferences and all those things to remain um enrolled in the program. So we will roll this program out um on July first, which is next week. Parents will have the opportunity to enroll. We will admit parents and students in the program. And then our expectation, um, August nineteenth is that all students will return back to school in person. And I have one more thing I wanted to share. And I have one more thing I wanted to share.
Excuse me, Mr. Jolly, before you move forward. So this was supersede the, the previous discussed plan of using Westwood as the virtual learning?
So at this point, Westwood would not be used for virtual learning at all. We will not use Westwood at all. This learning, the kids will be given computers and then they'll be working online with the company that we partner with. So we will not use our teachers. Our teachers will be here in school, supporting our scholars. We've had kids enrolled in this program. It's like K-12. It's basically safety is K-12, the online learning. Also, I wanted to give a facilities update. The middle school has officially moved to John Dewey. So all the middle school stuff is at John Dewey. We have a couple of things. We have to go pick up some artifacts. There's some, some trophies and other things that we want to put in storage. Our transportation accountability is still at the middle school. They will be there until, until late July. We are waiting on the Board of Education to get ready. And once the Board of Education get ready, we'll move transportation to the board. And then accountability will move to the new Board of Education because we'll be moving out our facilities. Lester and Ms. Pacey will be moving to the, what we'll call is the Transportation and Operations Office. The old board as Doug shared is being prepared for the buses. There are some additional modifications that have to be made to ensure that all buses will fit. The middle school has to be cleared by August 1st. So we will have the middle school cleared by August 1st. The demo starts on August 9th, I believe. The auctions, the sales of the auctions begin July 1st. John Dewey auction will end July 8th. Eastwood will end July 11th. Eastwood and the middle school, July 11th. And then equipment pickup, whatever people buy would be July 12th and 13th. So there'll be an online auction, fast track auctions. We'll post it online. We'll put it on our website. It'll be promoted by Fast Track Auction. People get to bid on it, starting July 1st, all the way to the 8th for John Dewey. They have pictures and everything of all the items. All those items actually now are, are at Eastwood. So they all are at Eastwood. We got the clean. John Dewey, I'll put everything at Eastwood. So they all at Eastwood and tagged. And then Eastwood and the middle school end on the 11th. And then the 12th and 13th of July. People who bought all the things will be coming to pick them up. At this time, that concludes my report and I'm open to any questions. Yes, ma'am. Okay, I hear you.
For the sale for July 1st. If someone is answering and buying something, can they go to Eastwood July 1st and look at the item?
All, all the items are online. So they have to look at a picture of the item. We don't have an open house. So they have to look at the picture and buy it off of that. Like Amazon or, or eBay. That's basically the way the process would be.
Is, is it the same process that, that was followed with the online auction for Randall Wood?
Yes, same exact process. Same person facilitating, just a different company. Are there any other questions? We will go in more detail about the online academy. Again, we, we are encouraging all students to come back to school. The learning this summer has been tremendous for the students who've been here. Tremendous. I think these seven day, 17 days have been very valuable. And we encourage everyone to come back. Now, considering what happens between now and then, there might be some changes. There are spikes, you know, large shutdowns. Then we will adjust the plan. But at this time, the plan is to bring everyone back. People will apply for the online academy, which we will offer. And we had an option available. Alright, so that concludes my report. Thank you for your support and appreciate all the things that you've done to help move us forward. You see this summer has been one of constant change, moving people, closing schools. I didn't mention the Eastwood. Eastwood Roar that was last Roar, which was Saturday, which was well attended. Some of our prominent, most respected teachers came. There's pictures on, on the website. Very just family oriented event. And I think that I appreciate the board for allowing us to share with our family the, the end of some things and the beginning of new things. All these events feel like this is just a family, you know, moving to a new house and everybody appreciating the old house and letting the old house go. So I, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the things that you, this board has accomplished over these last six years. And I look forward to the future of this new high school going up and continuous growth academic as we be, as we continue our journey to be the best school district in the state of Ohio.
Thank you, sir. It's been quite a journey and we are proud and excited to be along for the ride. At this time, we're going to move to item 1.8, our treasurer's report delivered by Dr. Rock.
Thank you. Can everybody see the screen?
Yes, it's not up.
Are you able to see my screen?
No.
No?
I can see you. I can, I can't see.
If you're sharing something, Dr. Rock, we don't see it as of yet.
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
Do you have share access?
Alright.
About now.
Here it's come. Yes, sir.
There it is.
Okay. So for tonight, I just wanted to review the year-end close process. We have 43 funds. The funds actually went up by a few because of the coronavirus federal grants that we're getting. So we're up to 43 funds, over 8,000 accounts, and all of this gets touched for the year-end close process. I review all of that. All the funds have to have a positive ending cash balance at the end of the year. Year-end appropriations are for 630, 2021. That's the end of our school year. That's how the fiscal year ends. And the budget, what we actually do then is we budget for the final days of the year. And the Ohio State Auditor requires us to have the year-end appropriations by the last board meeting with the, with the board. And that's before June 30th. So that's why that's, that's a unique aspect of budgeting for school districts where you have to close the year, but still have so many days to budget. So like for us, that's the seven last days of the year. The year-end process itself, the first step is to adjust all revenue to actual received to date. And if we collect more than what's budgeted, that's okay. The auditors say that's okay. If you budgeted 1 million and you collect 1.1 million, that's good. That's, so that's okay. Also, we adjust all the expenditures to this, for the spend at the end of the year. But in this case, we don't, we want to budget more and spend less. We don't want to spend more than what's been budgeted. That would be sightings that we would get from the state auditors. More of the year-end process includes reviewing all the ending cash balances for each fund. And in this review, we determine if the operating, if there's an operating transfer or an advance of necessary funds for the negative cash balances. An operating transfer is when the general fund transfers money over to the fund that, and they're not expecting that to be paid back. An advance is when the general fund advances the money. They loan the money to that fund and with the expectation that it would be paid back. Operating transfers for this year, we only had two. One was for the athletics fund and we usually have that. And we transferred earlier in the year 212,000. And there's a year-end cash balance that's gonna carry over into next year. And then next year, we'll also do a transfer there. The other transfer that we had to do is with the OFCC maintenance fund, which is required by the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission and the Ohio Department of Education. We're required to transfer one half of a mil every school year while the new buildings are being financed by bond levies. The advances that we had are just multiple advances and they're for state grants and local funds. And again, on these, these are grants that where we're gonna be reimbursed the money back. The, the revenue is gonna come in and those funds will pay that money back to the general fund. Also, on the transfers sheet, you'll see intra-fund transfers. These are just purely within the same fund. The best example is on our 2017 COPS finance payments. We pay those out of the general fund. But we have to designate and laser out a section for, for them. So we give the, the 2017 COPS finance payments. They're coded to a special cost center, which is 9218, but it's all still within the general fund. So there's a transfer from the general fund 000 special cost center to the general fund special cost center 9218. So it's all within the same fund. That's why it's called an intra-transfer. And these are not required to be board approved. But you'll see those on the list. And that's one of the really good improvements to the accounting system. They make this a lot easier for us to do. So the new system, that's one of the fruits of the labors that we're gonna really enjoy having that new accounting system. Then after we do that, the temporary appropriations, we work on those. And those are for us to allow spending between July 1st and September 30th, which by September 30th, we established the permanent budget for the new school year. So temporary appropriations are based on projected revenue and expenditures. And if we have the full data for that grant or funding stream, we can project that in there also. And it's, again, it's based on short-term spending, just for the next three months. Also on the agenda tonight is the super blanket purchase orders. These are used for vendors with recurring activity throughout the school year. So this way we could set up a purchase order for the whole year. Some good examples of those are gas fuel for transportation. We know we're gonna fill the tanks a few times. So we might as well set up the purchase order for the whole year. Paper products for food services. A lot of the food services ones, we could set up super blanket purchase orders because we know we're gonna buy food, milk, bakery, all of that. And then the utilities for the district. We know we're gonna pay the electric every month. So we set up a super purchase order. So those are on the agenda also tonight. And then also the super purchase orders are one of those first steps that set up the budget for next year. So we, that starts the process. And then that concludes my section.
Thank you so much, Dr. Rock. So with that, we're gonna go on and move into the body of the agenda. And then we can ask any questions of Dr. Rock as we go into his section. So if we can please have a motion on the floor to approve by consent agenda treasurer's report and financial recommendations. And that will cover items 2.1 through 2.6.
Madam Chair, I move item. Madam, Madam Chair, I move item number two, looking at consent agenda for treasurer's report and financial recommendations, item 2.1 through 2.6.
Thank you. May I have a second? It has been moved and properly seconded. Board, the floor is now open for any questions to Dr. Rock. Oh, Dr. Rock, you gotta stop sharing. So we go back to the agenda. That's okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
Alright, are there any questions of Dr. Rock, guys? Alright, hearing none. I just want to thank you and the team for getting the new system up and running. It was nice looking through the reports in a different format. And if you could please call the roll on this one, please.
Mrs. Gator? Mrs. M- Mrs. Muman? Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Next on up is, we need a motion on the floor to approve by consent agenda superintendent's recommendations and presentation for board action administrative staff. And this will cover items 3.1 through 3.7.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept as a consent agenda. Section 3 Superintendent's Recommendations and Presentation for Board Action Administrative Staff, 3.1 through 3.7.
Thank you. May I please have a second? It has been moved and properly seconded. With the motion on the floor, board, is there any discussion on this section for tonight's meeting? Alright, hearing none. Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Muman? Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. You're on mute. And I think what Mr. Charlie is saying, he has missed it on the phone.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Resolution 3.6 was reassigning Mrs. Stick to become the new high school principal. I do have her missed it on the phone and I want to see if she wants to say any words about her new position.
Thank you. Missed it?
Good evening. Good evening, Board and Superintendent Jolly. I want to thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to lead Lawrenceville Heights High School in the role of principal. I feel so honored and blessed to continue leading the best staff I've ever led in a meaningful way and continue positively impacting our scholars, engaging our families and community members in our learning environment. I look forward to this journey and I'm ready to continue moving Lawrenceville Heights High School forward in a positive direction. Under one team, one vision, one goal. Thank you so very much. I'm ready.
Thank you. We're excited to have you on board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stick. And thank you for taking the challenge.
Oh, I'm up for it and I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Alrighty, exciting times. Next on our agenda is section four. If I can please have a motion on the floor to approve by consent agenda superintendent's recommendations and presentations for board action certified staff, I'm sorry, certificated staff. And that will be items 4.1 through 4.5.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept as a consent agenda superintendent's recommendations and presentations, board action certified staff, 4.1 through 4.5.
Thank you. May I please have a second?
A second.
Thank you, ma'am. It has been moved and properly seconded. Board, is there any discussion under this section?
Yeah, I, I wanted to talk about 4.5 briefly. 4.5, we had to put on the agenda because currently our football team doesn't have anywhere to practice. So we need to be able to transport our football team to Westwood. We will be using Westwood as the temporary football practice field for our football, our varsity football team and JV football team. The middle school, we use John Dewey's field. So we will be using all our fields, the Westwood. So we will have a bus take the kids over to Westwood and bring them back to the high school. Even during the season, they're more likely practice at Westwood. So I just wanted to share with you why we need summer sports transportation this year. Because we don't have any where close for them to practice.
Thank you for that added clarification. Board, is, are there any questions on this section? Hearing none. Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mrs. Muman?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. I need a motion on the floor to approve by consent agenda superintendent's recommendations and presentation for board action. And this is classified staff. And this is going to be for items 5.1 through 5.6. May I have a motion?
Madam. Chair. That we accept as a consent agenda superintendent's recommendations and presentations for board action classified staff, items 5.1 through 5.6.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, ma'am. So at this time, the floor is open for discussion?
Hold on a minute. I'm sorry. Madam Chair. Can I just get clarification on the linkage coordinator positions? It's, oh, you know what? I read it wrong. It's fine. I see, I was on the wrong one. It says seat. Never mind. I apologize.
That's no problems, no problems. This is what the meetings are for. If there's no other questions, Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mrs. Muman?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Next up, we need a motion on the floor for section six to approve by consent agenda superintendent's recommendation and presentations for personnel, personnel and programs. And this is going to be item six point one through item six point one four.
Madam Chair, I like to move item number six, the consent superintendent's recommendation and presentation for personnel and program. Looking for item six point one through six point one four.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded twice. No pun intended. Board, are there any questions, comments on this this section of the agenda?
I just have one question, Madam Chair, for Superintendent Jolly on item six point one, the job description. Is that something that we will have going into the twenty one and twenty two?
Yeah, that's the job description for, we revised our social worker job description to include families, resource specialists, we wanted them to do a little more. So we included that, so we revised our social worker. So these will be licensed social workers in this position, just to give them more responsibility as we come back from the pandemic. So this is the revision.
Thank you so much, Superintendent.
It'll be much, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Jolly, six point four, the Calhoga County Universal Pre-Kindergarten. What does that entail?
It's just a grant that they provide us every year. This is part of the pre- on the county's initiative to support universal pre-kindergarten. So they provide us a grant yearly, and this is our adoption of that. I do want to talk about the six seven two, that's the X-ray inspection system. This is part of the new high school, we're just getting them early so we can get people activated to it. But this is part of the new high school where we have X-ray machines where when they come, when people come through the door, we'd be able to use that. That is part of the new high school design to have X-ray machines in there. Cleveland schools have them in their in their buildings. And so what just happened across the street, I think we probably should have them too. So, yeah.
And the six point eleven, the education service center, what does that entail?
So this is our MOU, standard MOU with them. This is the, this is not the standard MOU. This is the literacy grant that we have yearly that we've recently secured from them. So this is just the grant, I think it's for over three hundred thousand dollars. And just to accept the funds and continue to MOU so that we support the work that the grant entails. Our team will write the grant to.
And it's over multiple years.
It's over multiple years, three-year grant.
So do we have able to invite tutors through that grant, do you know?
There's a lot of professional development in the grant, helping teachers teach literacy better. The whole WHES thoroughly immersed in that. Our principals are thoroughly immersed in that. So this is a grant and and I think we'll do is have our principals and our team come speak to it more so that everyone's clear exactly what Roxanne did do a presentation on it earlier this year.
Good questions, good conversation. Is there anything else, Board? And hearing nothing, Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Muman?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Alrighty, at this time, we are, we don't have any unfinished business. We do have one new business item. We had board members Gator and Freeman who attended the NSBA advocacy institute June eighth through the tenth of this year. So we're going to hand the floor over to the two of you to provide us with a very brief overview of what you all took away from that session. It's up to you who decides to go first.
Now, the NSBA or National School Board Association Advocacy Institute online this year was a little bit different for the last five years that we've been allowed to attend this advocacy. It's normally two days in the classroom and then the third day you're on Capitol Hill with your current respective council. I mean, excuse me, congressperson or a senator. This year started all a little different. We had our new chief executive officer, Anna Marie Chavez, open it up. And they actually used a company to actually get some information about school boards and how we look at ourselves as a school board and how does the public and parents look at us. So from the survey and the survey company they had, they said, you know, these numbers could be wrong, but they said about forty percent, thirty-nine or forty percent of America looks at school board members as someone that they can look up to. So we were at forty percent that people in your respective city or state looks at like, okay, an actual school board member, I can respect that person. The president was like at fifty-one, Congress was at sixty, and they had us at thirty-nine to forty. So I thought that was eye-opening. And also in the survey, they did, did actual checks on if actual students had Wi-Fi or even broadband, and about thirteen percent of African-American and urban districts didn't. So we knew that was the case, and that's been the case with Warrensville. But it brought it open when you look at an actual national survey and you look across the board and with this pandemic that happened last year, it's a lot of these scholars in different states that can't even get onto their computer to even get their lesson to study. So I thought that was eye-opening. And then my takeaways and the big takeaways for me, and this was a great actual conference, was they looked at the the actual program we've been fighting for a long time on Capitol Hill, and that's IDA. That's the Disabilities Act or Disabilities Education Act. So we've been fighting it. About thirty-nine percent of public education is sponsored by the federal government. What we've been trying to do for the four years on the National School Board is actually get them to actually do a hundred percent financing to public schools for IDA. Right now, like I said, it's thirty-nine percent, but that fight still goes on. So that took that away, that we're still fighting that cost for disabilities. And the homework gap, they named the pandemic a homework gap. And homework gap is just basically saying, hey, it's a lot of schools and a lot of districts and a lot of parents that doesn't have broadband or Wi-Fi. And what can we do to help them get the actual Wi-Fi in their households to get the lessons virtually? I think with President Biden's, with his American Rescue Plan, it helped because it gave billions to public education, which we're trying to fight and actually give money into districts like ours. I think we received some money for Dr. Rock. And last but not least, they used a district in Pittsburgh. It's a good friend of mine, Anthony. Anthony's the superintendent over there, but he had one of his assistant superintendents do this actual survey. And the survey was for public education in urban districts. And we were like number nine or ten, Cleveland was. But they looked at transformation of communities. And that's something that Superintendent Jolly has done since he's been here. And I think as a board, we're very well at doing that, is getting all three of our communities engaged in our educational process and what we're doing educational-wise and making them feel like they're part of it. For us to go out and get a levy pass with three different communities and being the highest in the state of Ohio, we have to have that transformation of communities. And I think we're starting at it with Warrensville, and that was a good thing. I would like to actually meet my senators and my reps in person, like when we go on Capitol Hill that third day. But maybe next year we will, but this was a great, great conference to open my eyes. And also, Madam Chair, they they actually showed the presentations each day. So when we were up at five o'clock and me and Mimi were done, they still let you see it. And you can look at the actual seminar for that day. But it was a great program. It was a great conference, and I'm glad I attended. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ray. Mimi?
All right. Well, Ray actually touched on a couple of things that I was going to discuss. You know, I attended two and a half day sessions, just like he did, but rather discussed the different sessions. What I found is that there were twisted that that were the top topics. Voucher opposition was one. Ray touched on the homework gap and the digital divide, as well as the IDEA funding. So I'm just going to start with the voucher opposition. What NSBA is saying in terms of advocacy is that this is a good time for us to remind representatives why they should oppose public funds for private schools. Now, we know here in Warrensville and in the state of Ohio, the impact that the voucher program Ed Choices had on districts. So recently, Republican legislators came up with House Bill two ninety. In their mind, they say it's time to fund students and not not schools. So what they're doing is they're trying to seek legislation that's going to extend the state voucher program to any child. Currently, it's based on whether or not a student, whether or not the school district is failing. So, you know, keeping in line with the fact that this is an advocacy-type issue, the question is, what can we? Just as when it hap, just as it happened with Cleveland Heights, it's going to be a huge impact for us as well. I'm only going to touch on the homework digital divide. I'll give a little bit of the data that they gave us as well. President Biden has proposed a hundred million dollars in American job plans to build high-speed broadband infrastructure. And NSBA is asking Congress to provide a minimum of much-needed funding to help better connections and and new infrastructure for, I'm sorry, for any new infrastructure legislation that they bring about. They said there's an estimated sixteen million students that have been impacted by the homework gap. And what we're talking about is resources that kind of provide laptops, tablets, you know, other eligible equipment for connectivity such as Wi-Fi hotspots, modems, and so on. And then the final thing is IDEA funding was just the same thing Ray discussed. Congress has spent three billion dollars on a related emergency fund. I am. It's a legal requirement, so I guess I'm having some issues with my headset. But I did enjoy the conference for the most part. At some point, it becomes kind of redundant that the things we're talking about. I think it would have been a lot more productive if it would have been in person. Like Ray said, the opportunity to meet with legislators in person has been agreed. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you both of you.
Thanks, Mimi.
Alrighty, hopefully, we are rolling into the end of virtual conferences. Prayerfully, we will be able to come on through this situation and begin meeting in person again with our various professional development. Because as the kids have experienced, we're experiencing at work, we're even experiencing it in our our own PD, it is very difficult to sit through the hours and hours and hours of learning online. So thank you, guys, for attending and providing really great recaps. Next on our agenda, we're getting ready to go into executive session. So if we can please have a motion on the floor for item nine point one to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official or regulated individuals, students for the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee or regulated individual. Okay, so we've had a motion by member Gator. I'm not sure where she's having some technical difficulties with her headset. May we have a second, please? Thank you. Before we go into executive session, I do want to thank everyone who attended the meeting with us tonight. As we go into executive session, this is the last formal item on our agenda. And when we reconvene from executive session, we will be ending the meeting. So prior to us going into executive session, I did just want to let the community know that this board will be in our retreat, continuing our studies on the core governance board, governance mindset for school boards. And we'll be in that session Thursday, Friday evening, and a half a day on Saturday. So thank you again for joining us. Please feel free to hang out. But we will come back in after we reconvene just to end the meeting. Board, we will exit now and go into executive session. Board, we will exit now and go into executive session.
All right, once everybody comes back online, we can adjourn the meeting. It's cold.
They cut the heat off.
All right, we are, we're back up and online. So at this point, I do need, um, need to ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn tonight's, uh, record board meeting, uh, June 23rd, 2021.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Meeting is adjourned. Everybody, thank you for a great meeting. Have a